Everyone, it is now seven o'clock PM on September 27th, 2022. I'd like to welcome you all to Richland County Council Zoning Public Hearings. And this meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, if you would, please take the roll.
Malinowski.
Sure.
Q.
Yeah.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Teresa.
Here.
Aaron.
Here.
Or Walker.
Present.
Mackey.
Here.
English.
Present.
Newton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I also spoke with Councilman Joe Walker, and he is away out of town on business. But it's my understanding that he may be tuning in this evening virtually. But unfortunately, due to our rules, he would not be able to participate. But he may tune in this evening. Next item on the agenda is item three, additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. Are there any? Any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
None from staff.
None from staff? Mr. Malinowski, Mr. Livingston, you recognize?
Per my communication with the staff and the advocates and the community reference, item 511, I'd like to move that that item be submitted as a withdraw from the agenda and for tonight.
All right.
But that would mean this, this item is no longer, would no longer be before us. The applicant, it would not, it's now deferral, so it will not come back to us for this.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Okay, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Removed properly. Second, any discussion? All right, there being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Or Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five, which is the public hearing. Item five A, the 5A1, to be specific, case number 22-007 MA. It's from Lucky Daddy. This is a request to change the zoning designation from residential multifamily high density to office and institutional. 116 Beatty Downs Road, TMS number R06106-01-39. Planning Commission recommended disapproval, and staff recommends disapproval as well. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have eight individuals that have signed up to speak tonight. And that is the applicant, including seven individuals that have signed up for the project or in favor of the rezoning, excuse me.
Recognize, Mr. Pew.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve this zoning request. And I'd like to take a point of privilege too for a second, sir, if you don't mind.
Just as a point of order, Ms. Matt, can you believe you said someone has signed up to speak or no one has signed up to speak?
We do have folks that have signed up to speak. We have eight individuals. So we have the applicant, including seven individuals that have signed up for the rezoning to speak.
Mr. Pew, if you don't mind, may we just hear from the individuals who have signed up to speak? And then after that, I'll certainly entertain your request for a point of personal privilege.
Absolutely, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilman Pew.
Thank you. So our first is the applicant, Lucky Daddy. You would come forward to the mic? And since we have several individuals, I'm going to call two names at once. The second person, if you would, come to this mic over here. And that would be Michael Loman. All right, so Mr. Daddy, we'll start with you first. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes to speak, and I'll notify you of that time period.
Hey, hi, good evening. My name is Lucky Daddy. I live at 1103 Greenville Circle in Columbia, South Carolina. I'm the lead pastor and director of operations for Reconciliation Ministries. And what I'll just want to speak about tonight is kind of the programming aspect of what we do. Reconciliation Ministries unites with donors, volunteers, and advocates to provide a platform that enables those suffering from addiction to experience life-changing freedom, hope, healing, and reconciliation to God, to themselves, and to others. It's probably no surprise to the council, over 100,000 people died last year of overdoses, and that number is continually on the rise. What we do is meet people in the middle of their addictions, and we walk them through a discipleship process. The reason we're asking for the rezoning of 116 Beatty Downs Road is it currently is being used as a space where we can do some food, but we would like to be able to increase our food capacity, not only for the individuals that are currently in our ministry, but also in the community as a greater service to the ones in Beatty Downs as a whole. We do an outreach event on a weekly basis, and we also go to the, to doors and give out food boxes. So we just want to be able to have the capacity to have a small dining hall and to install some commercial kitchen equipment that we've, that we've been given, just to continue to make an impact on this community. Most of you are familiar with, but as a food desert, there's not a grocery store anywhere nearby. Transportation is an issue. It's not on the bus line. So we're really just trying to meet people in a place where we can help serve them as it pertains to food, while also being able to grow the capacity of the ministry that we do specifically to individuals that are struggling with addiction. I don't know if council would be interested. I brought just a few magazines where we've had some articles written about us and the things that we're trying to do, just to impact people's lives. So I don't know if you would want to pass these around and read them. But we're really just here. We want to make sure everything we do.
That is your time. Thank you.
That's a nice song you got going on there.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm long-winded.
All right, next, Mr. Loman, you state your first and last name and address. You have two minutes.
All right, I'm Michael Loman. My address is 5 Over Cup Corp, Ermo, South Carolina, 29063. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of this. I have great respect for what y'all are trying to determine. In fact, I just a couple of years ago sat in a position of that as chair of the Building Codes Council, Zone and Board of Appeals. I was chair of that many years. I understand the importance of enforcing the codes, not only for life safety, but for public protection of values. This project is something that, as Pastor Lucky Daddy was speaking to, is part of a vision for us to make a difference in the community. I do serve as a, one of the board of directors for Reconciliation Ministries. I've been volunteering for them for the last several years and have personally worked on many of the dilapidated homes that we've acquired and revitalized, making a positive influence on that community. And as our vision to continue to do so, not only for the participants in our program, but for the community in general. If you were to poll anyone that lives on Beatty Downs Road, the impact we've made over the last several years and the beautification and revitalize and the dilapidated products are making a positive influence. And we just want to continue to do that, and it's our mission to continue to acquire properties there and use this building as a hub to, as a dining hall and food prep for our mission and for the community.
Thank you. And the next, Jonathan Smalls and Ashley Arrington. Mr. Smalls, if you would state your first and last name, as well as your address, you have two minutes.
My name is Jonathan Smalls. I live on 40 Highwood Court in Beatty Downs. I also work in the ministry of reconciliation ministries. And just like our lead pastor had talked about, we are desperately just trying to give light into a broken world right now. There's been a lot of things that have happened like COVID and a lot of things that don't give a lot of people hope. And, and what we're doing right now is becoming a beacon of hope, not just feeding people, but letting, letting people know that we care and that there's somebody out there that is looking for the better interests of not only the community, but others too. And, and we believe in what we're doing. We believe in what God's doing right now, and we're just looking for favor in this situation. I know it's been a positive influence on my life. I come from gang affiliation to prison time. And if it wasn't for the ministry and the things that I've seen that are happening right now, my life wouldn't be changed as it, as it is right now. And I definitely would be standing here right now advocating for this. So it's definitely a positive, and it would benefit if given a chance.
Thank you. Mr. Arrington, if you would, first and last name, address, you have two minutes.
My name is Ashley Arrington. My address is 13 Lowescroft Circle, Ermo, South Carolina. And I serve as the executive director of Reconciliation Ministries. Since its inception, Reconciliation Ministries has purchased and renovated seven of the 25 multifamily buildings in the Beatty Downs community. And we have launched an aggressive capital campaign to raise funds to purchase the remaining buildings in the community over the next five years. Addiction has ravaged our nation with over 275 people a day dying of an overdose, which is over 100,000 lives every year that are lost. Over the last five years, here locally in Richland County, drug overdose deaths have more than doubled. Our strategic plan to purchase the remaining buildings in Beatty Downs will continue to give people in our community an opportunity to break free from the chains of an addiction. This rezoning of 116 Beatty Downs will enable us to serve more people in our program while also serving our community at a greater capacity. Beatty Downs, as already mentioned, is located in a food desert with the nearest grocery store over a mile and a half away. This means many of our neighbors who don't have transportation have to buy an Uber, walk to the store, or take the bus, which the nearest bus stop is about half a mile away on roads without a sidewalk. Having a kitchen and being able to serve meals and pass out food boxes to our community will be an incredible source of relief to many. As already stated, RM's long-term vision is to stay in the Beatty Downs community, and this rezoning is our next step to continue the transformation that is already happening in our community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, Daniel Millington and Paul Cumbers. Mr. Millington, would you state your first and last name, as well as your address? You have two minutes.
All right, my name is Daniel Millington. I live in 104D Beatty Downs, which is right up the street from where we're asking permission to do this. I have the privilege to say that I'm a direct product of this ministry. I struggled with heroin for 16 years and methamphetamine. And not only has it allowed me to have a beautiful apartment and a place to live in an unsuspecting neighborhood, to being able to live in the same space as my wife, but also going through the ministry and completing and becoming full staff and being the intake coordinator, it allows me to still be a part of a community that holds me accountable. And I was in the kitchen for a long time when we were at a different location. And we provide over 300 meals a week. And so it would be, you know, very beneficial for us to do this. Also, the neighborhood has changed drastically in the short two and a half years that I'm there. With the buildings that we're acquiring, just the atmosphere of the neighborhood has changed. Not only that, but we, there's the kids back out on the streets again playing, and we provided, you know, basketball hoops and things like that. So it's not, you know, just about the kitchen, but a way to be able to better equipped and pour into the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Cumbers.
My name is Paul Cumbers. I reside at 226 Hunter's Blind Drive in Columbia. And I'm the director of operations at Lighthouse for Life. We are a small nonprofit anti-human trafficking ministry, and we serve and work in the St. Andrews area, and we partner with reconciliation ministries. I just would strongly recommend that RM be granted the proposed zoning changes at 116 Beatty Downs. I firmly believe in and have witnessed firsthand the outreach work that they've already been doing in this community. And I look forward with great anticipation toward the many ways in which the community kitchen will continue to impact the underserved individuals in this neighborhood. The community kitchen will have a direct impact on the survivors and the victims of sex trafficking that our organization, Lighthouse for Life, serves. Some of our survivors will soon be living in Beatty Downs itself, and we look forward to our ladies having this unique access to the kitchen and what it will provide. Not only will they have tangible needs met, such as access to food, but as has already been mentioned by some of these folks, they'll have a chance to experience a very wholesome and hope-giving community as well, having come out of something horrific and just the opposite of wholesome and hope-giving. So on behalf of the staff at Lighthouse for Life, we highly recommend that reconciliation ministries be granted the proposed zoning change at 116 Beatty Downs. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next is Carrie Gerard and Carmen Smoke.
Hi.
First and last name?
My name is Carrie Gerard.
You have two minutes.
I live at 105 Beatty Downs, Apartment C. And when I first moved to Beatty Downs four years ago, I came home one night, and there was a murder. The father was murdered and the son was murdered. And then there was tape over there, tape all around the building next to us over here. And I thought this is probably not a good place to be. It was a very loud place at night. There were gunshots every other night. You can guarantee you're going to hear gunshots. It's, it's like, almost like you can, you're setting your watch to it. There were parties that would be going on late into the night. So one o'clock in the morning, you hear boom, boom, boom in the neighborhood. And then they, then there's this, this one lady, we used to walk around with her underwear on with her top off, and they'd bring her back in. But that's our neighborhood. That's where I live right now. And I've lived there for four years. They did a tent thing out there, and one, it was weird because I didn't see anything out there. There was a tent, and then they had a bouncy house, and then they had barbecue. And then they were giving away backpacks for kids. And there was all this stuff going on, and everybody came out, like, it just like, it seemed like everybody just came out and went down there. And since that day, it seemed like things started changing. When they started doing the grass and stuff and fixing the buildings, it's like the, the other landlords, they like got on their game and then started getting on their game and fixing up their places so they wouldn't look so shabby next to the units that they were working on. And it just seemed like it, it was, it was, it started changing. They brought food. They'd have food out there. They'd have events out there, and they'd hand out stuff, and they, they barbecue, and then they would offer food. They'd drive around to different, come to my door with a plate of food, and it was just great.
Thank you.
Please help.
All right. Mr. Smoke?
I'm Carmen Smoke. I reside at 208 Cannondale Road in Columbia. And as a board member, I strongly recommend your approval on this proposed zoning change. You've heard about the buildings restored, and our efforts beautify the neighborhood and improve the quality of life for all of the residents in Beatty Downs. Buildings have been transformed, but most importantly, lives have been radically changed. And John and Daniel are here as testimony to that. Our graduates have experienced marriages restored and children being reunited with their families. This zoning change will enable us, and subsequently, the community, the opportunity to continue to see lives impacted in our community strengthened. We're deeply committed to making a difference in our community and having a community kitchen that will enable us to serve more meals within the ministry, within, to the ministry as well as the community. We believe the opportunity will continue to reap benefits for reconciliation ministries and help our community thrive for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak tonight.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. And now, Councilman Pew, you recognize, sir?
Very much, sir. First of all, I want to thank Reconciliation Ministries. It's a mouthful. I had a time pronouncing it the last time for what you're doing in that community. I've been elected to this seat for a year and nine months. And when I first got elected to this seat, Ms. Arrington invited me out to see what was going on. And so I also had a vision of what this place looked like before you guys even thought about purchasing any of those properties back there. Because when I was in college, I lived over in St. Andrews Commons, and we knew that when the sun goes down, you have no business on Beatty Downs Road. And so it's important to see where you guys are going and what you guys are doing. So with all that being said, thank you so much for everything that you're doing. I'm looking forward to seeing what that community looks like in the, in the, in the near future. And I want to make a motion to approve this request.
Thank you.
Properly second, any discussion? You recognize, Mr. Livingston?
I know that the Plan Commission and staff both recommend disapproval for this one. And I understand some of the reasons why as relates to this property being surrounded by RM and HD properties. And I understand the main concern is to get a community kitchen. And Mr. Price, is there, there's no exception in that of zoning in, in, in current zoning classification for a community kitchen. Is all the option is to rezone that property for them to do what they want to do?
That is correct. And I will state that many times when the applicant comes in and they have the specific use in mind, especially something similar to this, we'll look for all options they have other than a rezoning. Curry, that district is one of our commercial designations. It's more the least intrusive of all of our zoning, our commercial zoning designations, and it's void pretty much of all retail type establishments. So it really is for office and institutional type uses.
No questions, comments, or discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Or Walker.
Yes.
Mackey. English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 5A2, case number 22-015 MA. The applicant is Brent Chitwood. This is a request to change the zoning, current zoning designation from light industrial to general commercial.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize, Mr. Malinowski?
Interrupt you because I've spoken with a developer. He's going to be speaking with community members the first week of October and would like to have this deferred until the October meeting, the actual vote and the public hearing, please.
Okay, understood. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, that's non-debatable. So Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski. Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Mac, Or Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 5A3, case number 22-006 MA. The applicant is Jared, and I hope I pronounced the last name correctly, but Moniki. And bear with me here, but this parcel appears to have, you know, multiple designations, but the, to request to change the current zoning designations from general commercial, light industrial, rural, and residential multifamily high density to residential multifamily medium density located at the end of Idlewood Boulevard and Barn Street, TMS number R11111-01-0254 and 55, R11114-01-02 and 13. Planning Commission recommends approval unanimously. Staff recommends disapproval. Madam Vice Chair, anyone signed, well, sign up to speak for this hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have three individuals that have signed up to speak, one being the applicant, and two others signed up, four in favor of the rezoning. All right, the first individual is the applicant. Jared Monikey. I apologize.
Monikey.
Monikey.
That is correct. This public hearing is now open. Just want to, I'll put that on the record.
I am Jared Monikey. That is the correct pronunciation. I reside at 315 Oconee Street in Athens, Georgia. And I represent today a developer, Landmark Properties, who is a national developer of single-family rental homes of university-focused and soon-focused housing and of multifamily apartments. We do rentals. I think inherent in this today, I've provided a slide out and, I'm sorry, a handout of some slides, some presentation that has some pictures and some helpful references. I think that the key of this parcel and these parcels is that it's currently zoned M1, which would allow for industrial uses, which in our opinion is not really consistent with the, you know, lived character of the surrounding RMMD parcels. There's RMMD to our, to our immediate right. There's RMMD kind of nestled in the site at the bottom. And then while it's in the city of Casey, there's a very similar development that actually landmarked developed in the past called the Retreat that is in this area as well. So our RMMD request is really consistent with the use that's currently there. As you can see in the site plan that I've provided, we've tried to minimize the amount of units that are in the, that are in the northern portion of the site, as that abuts the kind of more industrial, heavy industrial uses that are already in that area. And so really, our request is, you know, to allow for a little bit of a downzone, frankly, to RMMD. The proposed plan preserves a large amount of the site as rural untouched development. That's due to the challenging wetlands and flood plain on the site that kind of limit the usability of it. So we feel that this RMMD zoning is the, the best use of this property. It's consistent with the surrounding uses and will provide for, you know, a very solid residential environment for anybody who chooses to live there. I appreciate your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Bob Kobel and Leighton Lord, if you would both take a mic.
My name is Bob Kobel, and I actually didn't mean to sign up to speak. I'll turn it over to Leighton Lord and our next in Bruitt law firm.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and Council, thank you very much for your time. I'm Leighton Lord. I reside at 2416 Terrace Way in Columbia. We believe this request for a map amendment easily meets the seven factors required for a map amendment in Richland County. One, it's a downzoning from primarily M1 to RM, RMMD, which we think is more compatible with the comprehensive plan for Richland County. It's also more compatible with the lived community in this area. If you look at the zoning map, I would hope you could show or you see, you'll see this is surrounded by residential and the same zoning classifications. In fact, the parcel that my client is buying already is zoned for this parcel in two little spots. Second, it's compatible with the surrounding area. This is sort of a mid-density residential area. We don't think it creates a isolated
We don't think it creates a isolated unit because it's going to be actually better than, better than the M one classification. It's consistent with the residential character. It's got all the utilities it needs. So we're ready to, ready to go and provide that. We don't believe it causes any environmental impact because as Jared just mentioned, it's seventy-four acres, but they're only going to develop about thirty-four and leave about forty of them open space due to the wetlands. And finally, we believe this is very appropriate due to the residential character of the area. So thank you and we're available for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak.
I'm going to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, um, I move for approval. And it's based on, um, just no residents had any say against this. And also the only, um, disapproval came from one, but the only concern they had was that, um, that there was a buffer between the business and the residents. And, um, in speaking with Mr. Jared Moniki, they'll be able to work that out. And there's already that buffer that's provided there. So with that, and the number one reason we don't want them to go to Casey and we want that thirty to forty million dollar tax base to stay right here in Richland County. So with that, I move for approval.
You said that with emphasis. It's been moved to properly second. Uh, any additional discussion or questions? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski? Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Ma- uh, O Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
I am recusing myself from this vote due to my parent company representing the applicant.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five A four, um, case number twenty-two dash zero one seven M A. The applicant is Chandler Roy. And this is a request to change the zoning designation from heavy industrial to residential, single family, medium density. Uh, location is E S Farrell Road, T M S number R one, seven, six, zero, zero dash zero, two dash three, two. And R one, seven, six, zero, zero dash zero, two dash forty-six. Planning Commission recommends approval. Staff recommends approval.
Yeah. You recognize Mr. Pugh?
Mr. Chair, I spoke to a representative from the developer and we'd like to defer this into our October the twenty-fifth meeting.
Second.
Second.
Properly second, that's non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski? Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five A five, uh, case number twenty-two dash zero one nine M A. The applicant is Bill, I believe, Theus, Athais. Uh, this is a request to change the current zoning designation from Plan Development District to Plan Development District. Location is Wilson Boulevard, T M S number R one, four, nine, zero, zero dash zero, four dash zero, one. R one, four, eight, zero, zero dash zero, two dash two, two. And R one, four, eight, zero, zero dash zero, two dash three, two. R one, four, eight, zero, zero dash zero, two dash two, seven. R one, four, eight, zero, zero dash oh, two dash three, five. And R one, four, eight, zero, zero dash oh, two dash two, nine. Um, Planning Commission recommends approval. Staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chair?
You recognize Ms. Baron?
Thank you. Uh, I have spoken to Mr. Theus and as my custom, we would like to defer this item until October the twenty-fifth. And just for the public, we will hold a community information meeting on October the seventeenth from five to seven. It's a drop-in style. And it will take place at Killian Road.
Thank you, Ms. Baron. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved to properly second. That's non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski? Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Apologies, madam. Next item on the agenda is item five A six, case number two, two dash zero, two, one, M A. Uh, the applicant is Tony Lawton. And this is, you recognize Mr. Malinowski?
Thank you, sir. Applicant has not come and spoken to me at all on this. Nobody on this matter has spoken to me, so I have no idea what possible intentions there may be that we can share with the community in the area. Uh, there is also a discrepancy on the cover sheet here with the Planning Commission disapproval and staff recommendation of approval. I'd like to defer this until October twenty-fifth to be able to have the applicant discuss this with me.
Okay.
Properly second. Now, that matter is non-debatable. So Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five A seven, case number twenty-two dash two, two, I'm sorry, zero, two, two, M A. Uh, the applicant is Jenny Reyes. Uh, this is a request to change the current zoning designation from rural to neighborhood commercial. Uh, location is ninety-two hundred Wilson Boulevard, T M S.
Fair.
You recognize Ms. Baron?
And I don't know if this is appropriate, but I'm, I do plan to defer items seven and eight.
Okay.
Uh, and for the previous revisions stated, I've spoken to all the applicants and they also will be joining us at our, at our drop-in on October the seventeenth. So I'd like to defer this item until October the twenty-seventh. I'm sorry, the twenty-fifth.
And Ms. Baron, your motion is to defer items seven and items eight.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, there a second?
Okay.
It's been moved to properly second. Uh, that matter is non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item nine, um, actually that's item five A nine, case number twenty-two dash zero, two, four, M A. The applicant is Charlotte Huggins and this is a request to change the zoning designation from rural commercial to general commercial. Location is one oh, five, one, two, Garters Ferry Road, T M S number R three, zero, six, zero, zero dash zero, two dash one, six. The Planning Commission recommends approval. Staff recommends disapproval. I entertain a motion. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Madam Vice Chair, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we had, um, one individual signed up to speak. It is the applicant. Charlotte Huggins?
Record this public hearing is now open. Keep forgetting to say that.
If you would, Ms. Huggins, state your first and last name, your address, and you have two minutes for your comment.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, just to give you a little bit of history.
I'm sorry, ma'am. If you would, start off with your first and last name, your address, and then go into your comment.
Charlotte Huggins, two, seven, three, Old Congry Run Road, Eastover S C two, nine, oh, four, four. I've been residing there forty years in Richland County. This property we bought in twenty fourteen and I've been coming here since twenty sixteen. I know some of the faces. Uh, like I said, I've been coming here over six years. And, uh, just trying to uh, still get this G C. Excuse me, I'm just trying to get some things in order here. I dropped my papers a while ago. Initially, I didn't have, I only had one point eight seven and I have the paperwork from twenty sixteen that says I didn't have the two acre minimum for G C. So we purchased a property and I had to hire a surveyor, twelve hundred and fifty dollars to get over two acres. So that was done. And, um, so, um, as, as recommended by zoning, I was told to talk to the council person. And I did talk with Ms. Newton last Friday. And told her we were here for the second meeting today. And, um, she remembered me from years back and, um, she made it clear that she knew of the, the property across the road, Mr. Bunkies. She didn't agree with how he was zoned. But either way, um, I didn't get to say much, uh, because she quickly said she wasn't approving any more G C and she planned on denying me tonight, but I came anyway. Mr. Bunkies is G C. He's one acre. The embroidery shop across the road, he's one acre, also G C. And there's another, the Richland County Recycle Center right down the road, really right across the road too, which is thirty-four acres, but it's also G C. So I've tried to comply over the years and, you know, after I got my two acres, came back again.
That is your time, ma'am. That's your two minutes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, if I may, a moment of personal privilege.
Yeah, you recognize Ms. Newton?
Thank you. As it relates to this property, it, it is correct that I agree with the staff that the correct action here is to uh, deny this request. And one of the things that we look at when we look at zoning is we do look at zoning of the surrounding areas. And it is absolutely correct that Mr. Bunkies is zoned general commercial. You also have to look at how the property is used. And while it is true that Mr. Bunkies and some of the other properties are zoned general commercial, the lived experience and the way that those properties operate is actually at a lower intensity of zoning. And in order to stay consistent with the comprehensive plan and to keep the lived experience for the area, I think that the appropriate item here or the appropriate course of action is denial. Also keeping in consideration the larger plans for the area in terms of the protections that we want to have against encroachment for the McIntyre Air Force Base. So with those items in mind, I move to deny.
Again, it's been properly second. Any, uh, discussion? Are there being none? And Ms. Newton, I'm going to ask a silly question. But I'm going to ask it just to ensure that, um, you know, council member is able to vote, I guess, correctly, if you will. So the motion is to deny. So does a, a yes vote mean that denial? Or will a no vote mean denial?
I under- what I'm hoping is that a yes vote is denial, but I'm making eye contact with our attorney in case he thinks I'm wrong.
Okay, uh, Mr., um, Wright, you recognize?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, Ms. Newton, I believe that since your motion was to deny, a yes is in favor of the denial.
Oh, a yes vote is, I know.
Yes means no.
Yeah, I know it's counterintuitive, but again, I want to make sure that, okay. All right. So, uh, Madam Clerk, the, uh, motion is to deny is being to properly second. I don't believe there's any additional discussion. Council is clear on what a yes vote means and what a no vote means in this instance. So Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion to deny approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five A ten, case number twenty-two dash zero, two, five, M A. The applicant is Charlotte Huggins. And this is a request to, um, change the zoning designation from rural to rural commercial. Uh, the address is one oh, two, zero, one, Garters Ferry Road, T M S number R two, seven, eight, zero, zero dash zero, three dash zero, eight. The Planning Commission recommends disapproval. Staff recommends, uh, disapproval as well. Public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, we have one individual sign up to speak. Uh, that is the applicant. Uh, Charlotte Huggins? All right, Ms. Huggins, again, if you would, state your first and last name. You have two minutes. And I would like to remind you with your comments that you cannot name any council members directly or any staff members directly.
Okay.
Okay?
I just was meaning, because I had the conversation, but Charlotte Huggins, two, seven, three, Old Congry Run Road, Eastover two, nine, oh, four, four. The one oh, two, oh, one property, not long purchased. It was an existing or is, still is an existing business. Um, I think, um, in the last meeting, it was mentioned they had not complied. I don't know about what, but we just felt like it had a, a better, uh, existence as being, um, R C instead of R U. Um, and we're just all for the community and the economy building up out of our lower Richland area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak.
And, uh, he closed, so at this time I entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In concurrence with staff and the Planning Commission, I move to deny.
And denial in this instance, if you want to vote in favor of denial, you have to vote yes, correct? Now, Mr. Wright?
Correct.
Okay. All right, let's move to properly second. Any additional discussion or questions? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski? Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved to deny.
All right, next item on the agenda, item six, entertain a motion.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Stand. Okay, so a second?
Second.
Second.
For the record, Mr. Chair, um, note, just in case someone's looking at, looking at the agenda and didn't get the statement I made earlier on, reference the withdrawal of, um, item eleven, which regarding the Rushmore Road, um, tax map number R zero, seven, four, zero, three. Just wanted to make that point clear.
So noted, thank you, uh, Mr. Livingston. Now the motion for adjournment is moved to properly second. It's non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the roll, please.
Malinowski? Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
ER, adjourned.